Hey, what's up everybody? Omari Salisbury back here Africa Town Media. Um, you know, checking back in uh under kind of uh unique circumstances.
To say the least.
Yeah, we're fortunate enough this this uh this evening to get some time with Councilmember Girmay Zahalai. You know what I'm saying?
So close.
I've been working.
Girmay Zahalai, you got it.
Man, yeah, you got me. Councilmember G- Girmay Zahalai.
You got it.
Girmay Zahalai.
You got it.
We're in here. Uh, we wanna um on a serious note though, it's a lot of stuff that's going on. Um, really on all levels of government right now. It's a very interesting time, not only in our city, but our country. Because it's a lot happening even from the neighborhood level to the 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 schools, the city, county government, state government and uh the federal government. Um, first of all, with with a lot of developments that are happening here today, before we jump into the other questions that I might have. What's the the latest information that you have from the the county government that that you can share with our viewers?
Yep, as everybody knows, we have an unprecedented public health crisis right now that's sweeping across the world. And it's taking local governments, state governments, federal governments to make some pretty drastic actions to respond to that crisis. Uh, the latest that I've heard from King County and from Washington State is that number one. All gatherings above fifty people are just banned. You cannot have gatherings above fifty people. Number two, certain types of establishments are shut down for at least two weeks. Those certain types of establishments are restaurants, bars, um, youth, sports, anything that you can think of that's gathering people. And that's not made an exception i- is 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 pretty much shut down. For restaurants and bars specifically though, if you wanna do takeout or delivery, that is allowed. You just cannot dine into those establishments. So if you go to your cafe, you go to your favorite restaurant. You can't eat there, but you should still continue to support them by calling in and ordering food. Uh, there's a lot of different categories of things that are banned. I'm I'm happy to read those out loud. But the things that are still gonna remain open are uh I I will actually just go ahead and point out some of those. Uh, grocery stores will stay open, gas stations, libraries, pharmacies, hotels, uh convenience stores, pet stores, hiking trails. And then on the not allowed, you have all gatherings above fifty, youth sports, uh leisure, social clubs, uh fitness centers. Uh festivals, movie theaters, barbers, tattoo parlors, and the list goes on. And I'm happy to send that to you so that you can uh share.
That's not allowed.
Though those are things are not allowed. And then uh for for events that are fifty and less, those are also prohibited unless you meet certain criteria. Like proper handwashing protocols, proper social distancing. You see, you you sitting a little bit farther away from me than usual.
Distancing today.
Uh, so those are those are the the general updates that we have right now. Above fifty not allowed, below fifty allowed if you meet certain requirements, and then a whole host of types of establishments are shut down for two weeks.
Alright, so a a few things here then. If if you can explain us, what authority does the county have in relation to the city? Because like the city of Seattle, some of the things that you guys at the county is saying is open, like say the the King County Library System. Might be open, but the Seattle Library System is closed.
So uh, this is a little bit less confusing because it's these orders are coming from the state. So the state.
The state now.
Can tell, yeah, the state can tell the King County and the cities what to do, and they're keeping it consistent. So all those things that I just mentioned. Are from Governor Jay Inslee and they apply across cities and counties.
Okay, and so how how do people in our community reconcile when we see Dow Constantine? And we see Governor Inslee this morning and they're saying, uh, you know, people fifty or less. And then we see President Trump and we see Dr. Bricks and Dr. Fauci a few hours later, and they're saying only ten people.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard from President Trump is that you should not have people gather of ten or more. But he didn't say this is an executive order that if you don't do it, that you're committing a crime.
Well, it was a recommendation, but it was a recommendation from the President of the United States.
And I think the recommendation from our governor and our executive in King County is that you should not be having any events. Of fifty or e- or of less than fifty of even ten people, but those are not crimes the way that above fifty are crimes. They're just not recommended.
So somebody, and we're not recommending anybody tries this, but if somebody does decide to throw an event and it is fifty or more people. And whatever, what it what is the penalty that someone faces for that?
So from what I heard in the press conference from the governor today, he said that this is what's his answer. He said. The vast majority of people will just follow the orders and there will be no need for enforcement. But if there if we need to, he said, we the the state does have the authority to enforce. And he did, I don't think I heard him uh specify what kind of enforcement he's talking about, but we can speculate.
So tell me this, what is King County's uh top priorities right now? Like what's most important um for for the county, the county, you know, the council members? And the all the infrastructure that basically the county ecosystem. What's most important for you guys right now?
So have you seen the the coronavirus curves and graphs?
Mm-hmm.
So for those who haven't, if you're thinking about number of cases on this axis and time on this axis. The goal, if if we don't take any of the precautions that we're taking right now, the spike of cases will happen. Uh, in a very short period of time. So we'll hit the maximum number of cases in, you know, a week, two weeks, a very short amount of time. Versus if we implement our precautions, that curve flattens out because it's not hitting its maximum peak. Uh, until uh a long enough period of time where our hospital infrastructure can handle it. So the goal is to slow down the contamination to the point where hospital infrastructure response. Economy can sustain the blow of having that number of people infected. So that's the goal. Flatten that curve, spread the amount of growth of this virus across a long period of time. So that our infrastructure and our economy can handle it. Um, so that's, I would say on a high level, that's the the biggest.
Well, so in in the way that state government is set up though, isn't the county the authority as far as health goes?
Yeah.
So so the the expertise around this within at least our county sits with the county government and not in Olympia and not downtown and City Hall?
Uh, Seattle, King County Public Health has been leading as the public health officials locally. So uh, we've been taking direction from them around what we should be doing, uh what the proper response is. Around building the, you know, necessary uh places for people to go if they are infected. So they can self-isolate and not infect their family. Those kinds of things have been coming from our King County, Seattle Public Health.
Okay, so Seattle, King County Public Health, where are the tests at? You know what I'm saying? I mean, so so here's the thing is is that where it's a lot of confusion as well, and you might be able to shed some light on this. Though you're a politician and you know, a a community servant, I guess, as they like to say, and not necessarily a health professional. But you know, you hear like, man, there's no test, there's no test, there's no test. Then you hear people like, ah, well, you don't even really need to take a test unless you know, you have this or that. Then you hear like, oh, well, man, lots of people got this virus and probably just don't even know and everything else. What's the story around testing? And what's uh Seattle, King County Public Health? You know, what's their role in getting testing in place and how's testing gonna work?
So, first of all, I don't wanna talk out of line cuz I'm not a public health professional. Uh, I do think there's a lack of testing and a lack of testing kits. I think that we need much more of that. Like we need way more. We need our federal government to step up and provide those. Um, on the King County side, there's a hotline. And this is one of the resources that I can send you if you wanna put it in the bio of the of uh of this video. Uh, but there's a hotline that you can call if you think that you have been infected. Or if you are a healthcare professional who wants to ask questions about where people can get tested. You can call this hotline and uh somebody will direct you to the right place, whether that's the right testing facility, the right resource. That number can do that for you. There's another hotline that's general questions, like you don't think you're infected. But you generally have questions about next steps, resources, things like that, and I can provide both of those right now.
Right, well, it's fine, and we'll we'll make sure that those get posted. I think I saw earlier, they said it's only fifteen thousand people in America that have been tested in public labs. So I got a feeling that when testing actually does take place, I mean, this virus might really al- already be everywhere. And a lot of us might have already passed through the system.
Oh, that's the scariest part of it.
You know what I'm saying? Uh, it's gonna be interesting when the testing comes out. I wanna transition a little bit here. Um, a lot of people, your direct constituents, you know, although as a collectively, you guys represent King County, your district. You know what I'm saying? Right here from what Mont Lake down to in the Skyway. Um, it's a big portion of your constituents that have been heavily hit by this. You know, it's a lot of your constituents that are in the service industry, a lot of your constituents, you know, have children in Seattle Public Schools and things like that. From the county side, what kind of services and resources is the county offering for people that have been impacted? By a lot of decisions now that have been made by the state, the county and the city?
Absolutely. Let me first just say that the economic impact of these decisions can't be understated. You know, you're shutting down bars, restaurants. Um, our economy is so based on large gatherings and people and foot traffic and people being out and meeting up. So the moment that the decision was announced last night by the governor. My inbox just started flooding on social media, on email of small business owners, of people who are living check to check. Saying that I don't know how I'm gonna make it through this. And honestly, the yesterday was. By far the hardest day of the job I that I've been, and I know I've only been in this position like two months, but. Um, maybe one of the hardest days of my life, just hearing that and knowing that people are about to go through that. Um, I forwarded you an email that lists a bunch of resources for people. Definitely not saying it's enough. We have to do a lot more and there's a lot more that's being worked on, but I'm happy to read through some of those resources. Um, the first one that comes to mind is is the is the Small Business Impact Grant that's coming out of the city of Seattle. Um, ten thousand dollars for people who are impacted. That comes to mind. Uh, the state has also changed some requirements and restrictions around unemployment to streamline the process. So that if people, if people's employment has been impacted by the virus. They uh hopefully can get unemployment benefits much more quickly than they used to. And I and I put those instructions on that uh out there for you. Um, if people are having trouble paying their rent or mortgage, there's a Washington Home Ownership hotline that they can call. Uh, they can also uh click a link around Consumer Financial Protection Bureau that has some recommendations. There's a Rental Assistance and Counseling hotline that's gonna be included in that. There's a list of housing counseling agencies as well. Um, student loan deter- de- deferment, I'm sure people have heard, but um interests on student loans has been paused. Uh, I think that came from.
That might be one of the the most helpful things.
Yep. Uh, there's some resources around paying utilities. There's resources around food assistance that I emailed you. Uh, insurance um for businesses, the federal government just announced a Small Business Administration Loan Program. Again, loans are not what we need right now. We need grants cuz we don't wanna put people in debt. Uh, but they did announce a very low interest loan program for people who are having trouble with their small businesses, with their nonprofits. With rent, with mortgages, uh you can quickly ap- apply for a low interest loan just to get you through this disaster. Um, again, that's not, that wouldn't be my ideal, uh but that is a resource that's out there. Um, and then there are a whole bunch of additional resources that are uh in there as well. And then on my end, I'm working on a couple of things around uh doing something similar that as the as the city did around grants to small businesses. Um, so those are just a few of the things that come to mind that that are happening. And um, the the housing aspect as well, this one is uh what the King County Executive. And public health have recommended around, you know, if you get the virus and you're not positive, but you think maybe I do have it. And you don't wanna go back home and potentially infect a more vulnerable person like a one of your elders or somebody who's immunocompromised. If you wanna say, I don't, I'm not gonna go home right now, I'm gonna go to this other safe housing until I am confident that I don't have that. They're building those sites around the county right now.
Right. You know, one of the 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 questions that I discussed with um. Um, School Board District Director Hershey, who was here early, is, and you know, they say that in crisis is also also opportunity. But like, what are some of the things that this crisis thus far in your few months there on the job? Has shown you there's an opportunity for improvement within, you know, um, the King County ecosystem and infrastructure and and how it's related to the public?
I think no matter how long this crisis lasts, that society is going to fundamentally change after this is over. It is pointing out so many gaps in our systems, so many flawed ideologies. You know, we need everybody to have healthcare. We need universal healthcare coverage. So many people in our communities right now are underinsured or not insured at all. We need a basic income program. As automation comes in and puts millions of people out of work. Um, we can't rely on the old model of, you know, I'm gonna work forty hours a week and I'm gonna be able to afford. A house and a car and take care of my kids. That that system just doesn't work in our capitalist society right now. So having a a income floor, um, universal basic income, I think is uh something that we desperately need in this economy. Um, I think that this crisis shows us what local government is able to do when it deems something an emergency. You know, one thing that before all of this started that we were talking a lot about and that I came here and talked about is gun violence, right? What if we treated gun violence the way that we treated coronavirus? What if we treated it as an emergency and very quickly? Local government was able to buy up property and build housing for youth who are unstable, who don't feel safe in their neighborhood. So they carry a weapon and that's the only reason why they're shooting cuz they don't feel safe. What if we built housing for them very quickly where they do feel safe? What if uh we treated it as an actual public health crisis and we had public health professionals coming? And doing weekly reports like they do about coronavirus and they say, hey, you know, there was a shooting in this neighborhood. Based on our patterns that we've seen in the past of how violence spreads like a virus. We know that this person, this person and this person are going to be at risk moving forward of getting shot or shooting. So let's quickly deploy resources to support community outreach coordinators to go out and and interrupt the violence before it happens. If we treated gun violence the way that we treated coronavirus, I think that we could have a much quicker and more effective response around it. And that's what the the model is showing us, the the model of our emergency response. That's what I think it's showing us.
Yeah, man, and we'll see what happens. Hopefully the health professionals can move quickly and we'd probably end up at the end of the year with more deaths from gun violence. Than coronavirus, you know what I'm saying? You know, we'll see how that goes. How close is the partnership between, I know you said Seattle, King County, um, you know, the 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 Health Department. But in general, how close does is the county, the city and and the state work together uh in general? Because like to me, it seems like Seattle, all this innovation, all this technology. Like, there should be some kind of innovation where people came together and there should just be one portal. See, there's so many people who wanna help, but the problem is, and this is what I was telling these guys before, the the problem is, is the barrier to entry. You see what I'm saying? How high is the barrier to entry? Is the barrier to entry for you to get, you know, aid to to fill out, you know, a a a form that's twenty pages? Are you gonna need to be on hold for forty minutes and the lines only open from nine to five and those are hours that you work and things like that? There's so many people, organizations, public and private that wanna help, man. It seems to me in a city like Seattle with all this technology and innovation, guys, you know, with their APIs, one, you know, one software could talk to another and everything else. And somebody from their phone can navigate the system, you know, how old are you, where do you live, what's your zip code, do you have this many kids, do you rent, do you own, do you whatever? Boom, here's the next menu. Okay, you know, do you need assistance with this, this and that? Boom, here's the next menu. Then it goes maybe to a mutual aid, you know, um, or organization or whatever, or might stay with the city or county for assistance. But it's like, when we talk about moving forward, I would like to challenge you, you know what I'm saying? To be able to take this back to your coalition there between the state and the county and say like, man, never again should this be. That somebody's timeline is over. So now you're overwhelmed with all the all the the things that are out there. It's like, man, it's information overload. I mean, it's great and God bless everybody that's out there, public, private man, just just doing good things to make people happy. But I think one thing the government could come in on is to be able to take all of these resources, lower the barrier to entry. You know what I'm saying? Then the other thing is, it's like Seattle Public Schools, we got a lot of kids that are living with, you know, with grandma, with big mama and them. With aunts and uncles, they're not on Facebook, they're not on the Twitter, they're not on the web, you know. Where what steps are being made? Are we ma- are we doing mailers? You know what I'm saying? Are we calling? Is it IVR? Is it things like that? You know, I think that there needs to be some innovation around the way that this government correlation coalition communicates with the community. And I mean, in a city like Seattle, the barrier to entry should be should be low. And and based upon technology, people still need to go through the steps, but based upon technology. You should be able to put from anything from United Way to SBA loans, to to food banks, to everything, all in one portal. You know what I'm saying? And and people can activate that portal. I mean, that's just the kind of things. Then when we think about a crisis creates an opportunity, that's an opportunity for the state, for the county, for the city. To be able to come together around technology to serve all citizens for the state of Washington better.
That's such a great point. Oh, yeah, I absolutely agree with you. I think that's something that should have existed a long time ago. Because now, you know, dealing with it during the crisis is um. You know, information is changing every day. There's an emergency going on, so trying to do it kinda reactionary is harder. But if we had been planning this and doing what what is just a great idea before this, we would. We would have the infrastructure to deal with this much better, and I think that's a great takeaway to move forward with.
Right now, you talked about uh earlier how yesterday was probably uh definitely the the toughest day of your tenure thus far as a council member. Maybe one of the toughest days of your life. Can you tell us a little bit more? I mean, a lot, when people come and do updates, which is good. But you know, I mean, you 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 kind of opened yourself up a little bit more as uh yeah, as a council member, but as a human being. So maybe you can share with us like, may, you know, maybe not people's exact stories, but what is it that impacted you the most yesterday? And how does that also impact your sense of responsibility now as a council member?
So. You you. It's it's just really hard, you know. There are so many people in our city and our county who are privileged, right? They can work from home. They have computer-based jobs. They can just, whether they're in an office or at home, it's the same thing for them. There's a whole nother population that was already struggling for a long time. That's impacted by, you know, losing their homes, getting pushed out of the city limits, working harder and harder every single week. And getting less and less out of it, trying to take care of their kids, trying to uh manage medical costs. And then suddenly you put this on top of all the struggle that was already happening? You know, one one stat that's always brought up here is that racial wealth gap that's that we see in Seattle.
It's big.
It it's it's huge. What is it like? Average wealth of black people in Seattle? Forty-two thousand, five hundred. Versus if you're white, it's in the hundreds of thousands. And then on top of that already struggle, you're shutting down small businesses. People are struggling more and more. You're shutting down schools of kids who already lived in unstable housing. And now they don't have somewhere to go during the day. And so if we're already dealing with gun violence, what's gonna happen now that kids don't have activities during the day? It could get much worse, right? So just that idea and then hearing the personal stories, people messaging me saying, I live paycheck paycheck to paycheck. I don't know how I'm gonna get through this. Um, people messaging me saying, hey, my kids are gonna be at home alone now. Like I, I don't know what to do with them. Um, so it's definitely been the hardest day since I've been there by far. And um, and seeing community respond and create mutual aid initiatives. And people, you know, making a Google Doc where they're going to uh provide services and say, hey, I'm gonna step up. And do what I can to help my community. This, these are the things I can offer. And then people listing the things that they need and then uh community out there rallying and uh connecting resources to needs. That's just been super uplifting and inspiring to see. Uh, but it's, this is gonna be a a challenging, challenging period for all of us to get through. It is, it is.
I think that um, one thing that got me in, you know, a black dot, black dot finally, you know, with the with the governor coming in, the governor was like. Uh, you know, we basically need to shut it down, do a lot of classes here, black dot and a lot, you know, a lot of stuff, Africa Town. But before before, you know, the governor basically um issued a statement. Some of the fever, we had a meeting here last week and had to do with the big developments that are going in here, twenty-third and Jackson and twenty-third and Union. And you know, how it's gonna play out to community members, you know, we're gonna be able to afford to live there, we're gonna be able to afford it, the shops are gonna go there. And I got some feedback from a from from quite a few people, not not a lot, maybe four or five. Like, well, you guys, you guys shouldn't be doing this. You guys shouldn't be having this meeting. You guys shouldn't. And maybe it was out of an abundance of caution. I would, I would, I would hope so. But you know, I had to tell them that it was like, man, you know what? Poor people are still working. And so, you know, when I, when I read these comments and it's like, oh, you know, it should be at home with computer and this and that and everything else. I was like, man, poor people are still working and that's why we still here. You see, you see what I'm saying? Because that's who we work with every day, is we work with poor people, we work with marginalized people. And they still out there. I mean, I don't know if people realize, even when you're getting that food delivered, man, them people, you know what I'm saying? Those people aren't the people who can buy big houses or this and that. Those those, when you talk paycheck to paycheck, those are the people. So the people who are still delivering the services, even when you get the food delivered, the guy who's driving DoorDash, he's not balling out. You know what I'm saying? If he could work from home, he could. And I just think that, man, it might not be intentional. But I think that, you know, there's a real gap, there's a disconnect here. Cuz poor people are still working and it's like, you know, it's people, it's just letting me cake. You know what I'm saying? It's like, yeah, I I I work in the tech in in infrastructure, I work in the tech economy. And, you know, I'm just, I'll be honest with you, man, I'm real proud of you. You know what I'm saying? I'm real proud of you because, you know, it's it it seems like, man, you're you're still in touch with the poor people. And, you know, I mean, and and there's rich people in our district as well, and I'm sure you serve them fine as well too, but you know what? Understanding that, man, these guys are still out there working. They're stocking the stores. You see, you see what I'm saying? They're delivering the food. I mean, up until yesterday, they were your bartender, your server and things like that. The pay to the the paycheck to paycheck guy. And I can tell that the sincerity of your constituents reaching out to you really impacted you in a real sincere way.
Definitely, and ju- just to add one note to what you're saying. During times of emergency, there's a procedure where. The executive of whatever level of government you're talking about gets expanded powers, right? The mayor during times of emergencies gets way more power and her city council's power shrinks relatively. Same with the King County Executive, same with the governor, same with the president versus Congress during times of emergency, the executive's power expands. And usual protocols and procedures are expedited. So the usual checks and balances of different branches of government, that's much less than it usually is. Just because our usual systems for getting stuff done are slow. Like imagine if the governor or the King County Executive wanted extra funds to address this problem. Getting funding takes a long time usually, right? But the virus is growing really fast. All that to say that one of the procedures and processes that we that we dismiss or that we expedite. Can't be equity, can't be thinking about how our decisions impact the most vulnerable people in a region, right? During times of emergency, we don't dismiss equity, we lean into it even more. We have to say, yo, y- yeah, we have to mi- do things really fast. But this idea that we don't burden people who are already struggling in this economy, that becomes even more important. So I that that's the lens that I look it through and that's the lens that I'm hoping every level of government continues to see. Because yes, I completely agree that shutting down uh. Social gatherings is super important and I hope everybody watching this takes this very seriously. Because every time you go out, every time you go to a packed uh dinner establishment or a club or anything like that. You're you're putting people in jeopardy and you're uh increasing the timeline for uh us getting through this. At the same time, those decisions that we make have to come with the proper support. That people need to not frankly die from this. You know, you're 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 trying to cure one thing. And you're killing people on the other hand, because if people can't afford their rent or their medical costs or take care of their kids, that you're you're killing them. If not their body, their soul, their livelihood. So uh thinking about and acting as if you are. Having the most vulnerable people in your mind as you make decisions is super critical. Having the most vulnerable people in your mind as you make decisions is super critical.
Yeah, I mean, I I really, like I said, want to acknowledge your your sense of empathy, you know, I'm saying, for the for the community. It's a lot, you know, it's people right now and. I mean, it's it's real, guys are just literally out of work. They don't, they don't have any means, they don't have anything. I mean, it's a disaster, you know. I mean, we could go back and forth about the government saw coming, who didn't do what or anything, but right now, we're just, we're we're in the sticks. You know what I'm saying? What is it like? Uh, I guess I ask you the same question twice, you know, as a King County Council member. You know, what 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 is your advice, especially for your constituents who who are are struggling the most right now? In a very, in official capacity, what what's, what advice are you giving?
It's hard to give them advice because the advice that I would give is to people who are in positions of power to do something about this. Right? I'm not gonna tell somebody who is struggling, who is. Trying to think about, whoa, what is my next week, month, year gonna look like if I just don't have money for the the basics of life? Um, I I I will say that people should take the the social distancing stuff very seriously, just so that we can get through this as. As fast as possible. Uh, but I would really call on uh people like me. Uh, and people who are business leaders, the Amazons, the Microsofts of the world to really step up. Like, they, they have the resources to weather this because they have billions of dollars uh just waiting for times like these. Uh, they should be taking care of our community right now. Every dollar that Amazon is making off of. Um, you know, people buying sanitizer and toilet paper and everything on their platform. Every dollar from that should be coming back to their hometown. This is their hometown to support people locally. Um, and our elected leaders at the federal level, the advice I would give them is it's time to drastically rethink our systems. Right now, we need universal basic income. We need immediate cash assistance for people. That's the only thing that's gonna get us through. It's not gonna be. Doing low interest loans and bailing out banks and things like that. It put cash in the hands of people who are struggling right now. Or else this thing is gonna get much, much worse.
Right. Um, we're gonna wrap this up here in a minute. I wanted you to go back through one more time, you know what I'm saying, as to what people should be doing, the the the, everything that's come down today from the, from the State House, from. From Governor Isley, and I just had one or two more questions for you.
Yep. So as of last night, the governor and the King County Executive announced that all event gatherings of fifty people or more. Are prohibited. And you can go down the list of what a event of fifty people or more is, right? That includes uh sporting events. Church, co- community meetings, movie theaters, whatever it is, fifty or more prohibited. Fifty or less also prohibited unless you're able to show certain criteria that you're meeting, which are. You know, risk mitigation criteria, making sure that people are clean and not spreading and vulnerable people like elderly people are not coming to your event. Um, and then there's a different category of things that are being shut down, which are uh establishments like restaurants, bars. Um, uh, fac- uh workout facilities, just places where people generally gather. Again, I would say that please continue to support your local restaurants and bars through takeout and delivery. Uh, and tip your delivery person as well as you possibly can, because those are the people who are most impacted by this economy, so please tip them. And please continue to support small businesses in every way that does not include dining in. Um, and then the the places that are open are still gonna be, you know, your grocery store is not gonna close, your. Uh, pharmacy is not gonna close, the hospital is not gonna close, places like that.
Right. Um, so I I asked you a question earlier in the capacity of a a council, King County Council member. And your answer to that is like, okay, well, man, my my advice and my discussion would be towards policymakers and lawmakers. So now, as you know, Grandma from the block, you know what I'm saying? Putting, putting the the, taking the the council member hat off to to your your fellow, you know, literally your brother, your brothers and sisters out here. You know what I'm saying? In this district that you represent so well, that we're all proud of you, to this, this neighborhood that you grew up. Went to Franklin High School, from South Seattle, and I probably can imagine a lot of the people who are really struggling, it isn't even like, yeah, I voted for you, I'm sure. These is, a lot of these people are people you know.
Yeah, yeah.
You know what I'm saying? You know, from from you as the person, you know. What 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 kind of words of encouragement do you have for your constituents, not even here in King County, but state of Washington, anywhere someone might see this video? The the that's really on the marginalized side of this issue right now.
I would say that w- we have to take care of each other and we will take care of each other. The the efforts that I've seen from. Community-based responses are the most inspiring responses that I've seen. I've seen people showing up and saying. Hey, our kids are gonna be out of school right now, let's go donate food, let's go drop off food to them, let's have sites for them to to pick up food. Oh, people need rides? Yo, I got a car, let me go out and pick people up. If you're somebody who is. Uh, has the privilege of working from home, reach out to your friends who have kids and they don't know how they're gonna. Uh, take care of their kids and go to work at the same time, offer to take care of their kids uh so that you're just providing that. I think. We will get through this because I know how powerful our and and empathetic. And amazing our community is and how we all show up for each other. And so I would say, please keep leaning on your loved ones, please. Uh, think through what you can support, what you can do to support your community. And and it can be anything. If you have an apartment and you're gonna be there, bring kids in. If you have a car that you're not using. Uh, le- lend it to somebody. If you know the that your neighbor across the street i- is an elderly person and. And they can't go out, but they don't have family or support to bring them food, please go and and bring them food in in a safe way. And uh, again, that's not advice, because I've already been seeing it and that's the encouragement that I would give. Is that I know we're gonna get through this because we care about one another, we show up for one another. I've been seeing it and. And, you know, this is a very challenging time. I'm doing everything I can. Uh, I know a lot of people are and um. I do think, I do think we're gonna make it through this.
Sounds like you're talking about people just need to keep on doing what they're doing and what they're doing is showing a lot of humanity.
A lot of humanity. You see, you're the poet. Uh, that's not me.
The politician and the poet.
The politician and the, but can you, can you title this episode that?
There it is. I got you. Uh, man, you know, I I know you're very busy and you know, we're very appreciative here. That that uh you took time and actually came here, you know what I'm saying? It's so important in the neighborhood, people see you against this backdrop, you know what I'm saying? And and the viewers appreciate that you came here to to Black Dot. And so I want to thank you for that. And um, I also wanna continue to keep the door open to you, you know what I'm saying? I know it's not always possible to be here. Um, but you know, the door is open throughout this crisis and beyond. I mean, you know, the best thing is, is when we started this, well, be before the virus. You know, I'm saying, hey, come on in, tell us what's going on, what's happening, this and that. So you know, this door remains open to you. And I mean, I would say um for for you, please keep us on all your 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 action updates and this and that and everything else, man. Because we want to be part of the loop of being able to one, spread this this humanity throughout our community. So on the community level, even when you hear about things, let us know so we can amplify what's going on. And then important changes down there in City Hall, um, down there in the council chambers and in the State House. If you can always just kind of keep us in the loop so we can, you know, keep the messaging on par within the community.
Absolutely, and I just want to thank you all uh for providing this platform and keeping the. The community updated on what's going on. There's, there's nothing more important right now. People need to have information. The latest and verified information and y'all do that for people. And this definitely won't be the last time because. This coronavirus, every single day feels like a new year or a new decade, because there are such rapid developments. That the response is drastic every single time. And so where we're at, a fifty-person ban right now. Could be even more drastic tomorrow, could be what San Francisco has done uh as of today. You hear about what San Francisco did? Uh, San Francisco's in lockdown, you know, you can only leave your house for groceries and for essential things like that, pharmacy, hospital.
Now, you know, if they lock it down, you you go, you're definitely gonna be here, boy, because people are really gonna wanna hear. Like what's going on.
That's why I said this won't be the last time.
Fantastic. Man, once again, thank you for coming out, you know what I'm saying? Um, everybody out there in the community, you know, where we're stepping up our communication efforts for you and so, you know, you'll be hearing for us. Um, throughout this crisis and beyond, you know what I'm saying? We ain't going nowhere. She man a big O and we out of here from the underground. Peace.